I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is 8:33. This is the Vermont State Board of Education, and today is Wednesday, October 19th. And Maureen or Suzanne, I'm not sure who's running the meeting today, but could we do a roll call?
Sure, this is Suzanne.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Patrick Brown.
Good morning, everyone.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Tom Lovett. Gabrielle Lucci.
Here.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Present.
Oliver Olson. Jennifer Samuelson.
Here. Good morning.
And Dan French.
Good morning. Suzanne, Kim is in the chat saying she's here but doesn't have audio or video, so I don't know if she's truly present. She doesn't have full audio, but it sounds like she can hear it.
She's been given all access, so she should be able to unmute, and her camera should be, she should be able to show herself on the camera.
All right. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? I see Kim has her hand raised. So, Kim, feel free to chime in or type in or however you're communicating.
Thank you. I'm sorry. It just allowed me access. Great.
Good morning.
I'm here. No announcements. Sorry. And no changes to the agenda.
Awesome. All right. Any members of the public who wish to be heard? We will leave this open for 15 minutes, but if there isn't anyone here yet, I'm going to move on to item C, which is to review and approve the minutes from our September 28, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Second. It's been moved by Kim Gleason. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lyle Jepson. Is there any discussion?
I just need to make one amendment to include Katie Ballard in the attendees from the last meeting. She was to have arrived to participate in the meeting on behalf of the special education community and due to some Cavill challenges, just arrived a little bit later. So we get to hear from Katie today, but I wanted to make sure she was in attendance at the meeting.
Great. Yeah, and I apologize because I did not catch that omission from the minutes, but I do remember that she was there and, you know, I appreciate her coming and then not being able to make the presentation, so I'm glad that we could redo it for today. Okay, other than the friendly amendment to include Katie Ballard as present at the meeting, are there any other amendments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving or adopting the minutes from our September 28, 2022 meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. All right, the motion has carried unanimously. And are there any board announcements? I'll just jump in here. I know that Oliver was not able to attend today, but I just want to publicly acknowledge him for his amazing leadership as the Chair of the Board. He certainly has done an awful lot to make my job easier, assuming the chair position, so I'm grateful for that, and certainly leaves large shoes to fill, but just want to publicly thank Oliver for his service, and he just wasn't able to come today, but I just wanted to put that out there. So, thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Gabrielle for the student report.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I don't think I have too much to report. Once again, all I can say is that sports and clubs are really back in full swing. There's games, it seems like every day, and kids are really excited to attend those, which is a nice thing to see. I really, I don't know. I think things seem to be going pretty well. Kids are getting back into the, to the, like, the routine of school, and they seem to be doing pretty well. So I think that's it for me on my part. I'm sorry. I don't have anything else to report.
Are you getting, like, COVID waves going through your school, or?
Oh, um, it's really not as extreme as last year, it seems like, which is a good thing. I mean, we have some cases here and there, but it's not as, like, widespread. So that's, that's certainly a good thing.
Does it feel like school's basically back to normal?
Uh, essentially, yes. Yeah. I mean, we still all have that, you know, the sense of the pandemic, like, lingering in the back of our minds and stuff. We still have a little bit of worry, I would assume. I mean, I know I have some worries, which is why I still mask at school, but it seems like everyone is pretty comfortable and, you know, starting to feel a sense of normalcy, which is nice.
Kim, did you have a comment?
That was actually my question, was to have a reflection on if it is feeling like what you all remember of normal. I know it's been a couple of years since we could probably call things what used to be normal, but it sounds as though easing way back there, Gabrielle.
Sorry. Can you repeat that last part? You kind of cut out for a second.
Just, I, my question was the same as Jennifer's, really, just to, I was prompted to think about what you all remember of normal from a couple of years ago, and if this is feeling more like that for you.
I would say so, yeah.
I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, I was talking to someone yesterday, and like, the last couple of years, it felt like, you know, we dropped into fairyland, and I have trouble remembering if something was like six months ago or two years ago, because that time just all sort of blended together. So I don't know if that hits, like, students the same way it hits adults, but... All right. Anything else? Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Gabrielle. I'm going to circle back to see if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard. Okay. And I'm wondering, actually, Kim and Tammy, would you guys be able to do your update on the education quality standards? Okay, why don't we jump to that, and then I'll circle back maybe one more time for the public, and then we can go on from there.
I'm going to defer to Kim for the update today.
Okay. I'll start, and then you hop in. I know that we've done some connecting over the last week. We continue with our meetings in an effort to bring some additional voices to a conversation about reflecting on the proposed rules, to see if those are clear and can be understood. Is that me? I don't know if you all are getting echoes. I was getting big echo. Okay, sorry about that. I don't think I have anything on that would cause that. So we're, we're posing to the field some questions around the clarity of the language, the expectation of whether these, as written, are best practiced from their, their perspective, and are able, they can envision them being able to be implemented in the field, and then to just hear their perspective. And we have been focusing and are complete with our work on definitions, and now had been focusing on instructional practice as an area that had the biggest revision, and now a little bit more broadly getting perspective. And today, or tomorrow, I'm sorry, we'll have a meeting, and we'll get to hear from the AOE on technical suggestions for change that probably have been amassed over a bit of time since the last time they were updated. And then we're looking forward to receiving that and seeing where that can be incorporated into this body while the rules will be open. We will also have the opportunity to hear from some student representatives on their reflection of whether or not this reflects an experience that they would wish to be having, and how they might inform their, themselves as future graduates. And so I look forward, we look forward to that as well. I think we'll have that opportunity tomorrow. And then next week, we hope that we'll be hearing from representatives from the VSB, A.V.S.A., VPA, along with hopefully some geographic diversity to include superintendents and board members that can take in the review of the language as it's proposed and see how that hits for them with respect to those few questions. We also have coming up, pretty much almost a meeting a week while we try and get through this, and identified November 14, Monday evening, as an opportunity for a public hearing where we'll just have 90 minutes or two hours where we are offering folks a minute and a half or so to share with us their reflections, submit anything they would wish in writing. And this is all in advance of having our opportunity to present it to the full board, because this process involves our work, and then the full board's work, and then, and then the formal process. So there have been no shortage of opportunities to weigh in and provide feedback. And then finally, Tammy and I have drafted an email for Jennifer to figure out next steps in a process for broad legal review. And that I under, we understand is probably initially presented to the Attorney General's office, and then if they, as has happened in other cases, don't have the capacity or do have the capacity, they'll let us know if they will be offering that or will need to seek outside counsel.
Great. So as you guys are, you know, drafting the rules and sort of seeking feedback on whether it's kind of landing with ultimately, you know, the entities, the schools that are going to be implementing these rules, how are, like, you mentioned that you were trying to get some broad geographic diversity, but I'm just curious, like, how are you getting that message out? Email, or?
Yeah, we've emailed. We, we've, there have been areas of the state who have had challenges around working through equity issues in their communities, and we reached out directly to some of those folks, the VSB, A.V.S.A., VPA. We've consulted to try and get some suggestions from there as well. Public comment is always open, and I know people are very busy, so we've, we are grateful for whatever feedback we can get, and that helps inform how we understand the rules to be able to be implementable and operationalized in the field. We've also reached out to CTE for feedback as well, from one of the directors there, and hope that we'll have an opportunity for their reflection on the body of work as well. When we are, I think tomorrow we'll be able to firm up our time exactly for the public hearing, and then I think we will brainstorm our best ways to get all that information out. And I know, I'm sure the Act One group will help us do that, as well as the associations, finding the most effective ways to be posting and advertising that through the AOE as well. So we're open to any suggestions there. We just needed to confirm our details on that tomorrow, I think, so we can provide people with some guidance as well, prepare a minute or prepare a minute and a half, so that we have the opportunity to hear from as many people as possible. And we've done some public hearings before, Jennifer, where, like, we were in the formal process, and there's no one who shows, this is a little bit different from that. It really is part of an informal process that we're choosing to do in our committee work, so that we can bring you all as a full board, the most thorough, the most thorough feedback that we have in our decision-making as a full board. There will be a formal process that will include more public hearings, so we're trying to balance offering the time and, and reminding people there'll be a more formal process later.
If I, if I may also add to Kim's point, the Act One Working Group has, has networks that they have been working with to sort of keep people apprised of the work. And we have had quite a bit of public comment during our subcommittee meetings from constituent groups, but something else that our group talked about is, that will be important for the November 14 meeting, will be to have those announcements translated into multiple languages, and we may be seeking translators from the community, just to make sure that voices who may not necessarily be heard otherwise have an opportunity to comment. But I do know the Act One Group has, and Amanda and Mark have, have a network that they have already sort of established that will be getting, I think that gets the message out more broadly. And that, that network seems to be quite effective, because we are hearing from lots of folks as we go along. So, but certainly open for suggestions to put it out to this group, but also to the more general public. They should be reaching out to us if there are specific constituent groups or individuals who want to come and speak with us about this. We have two public comment periods in both of our meetings, in addition to inviting guests, where we actually have a dialogue with them. So, again, we're working very hard to make sure that we are open and inclusive and are making lots of opportunities for people to comment and get their ideas on the table. This is Moosir. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Well, thanks to both of you and everyone on this committee, because I realize that this is a big lift, that's sort of hitting a bunch of different areas, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you guys are approaching your work. So, thank you.
If I may add one other thing, that we do have a working document, right, where we have agreed as a committee on some possible, with some changes that we will be recommending to the board, and changes by virtue of changes from what Act, the Act One recommended to us. And so that document is up and available. We're working, if anybody's like to take a look at it, it's redlined and strikeout, and there are comments on it, so we can track exactly sort of what the discussion was, when decisions were made, and things along those lines. So if you're looking to have a sense of what the, what, what some of the conversation looks like, and what some of the changes that are coming, potentially going to be recommended by our committee, and again, those changes would be to the language that Act One, the Act One Working Group provided to us, or other changes to the EQS, you can sort of follow along that way. And I'm also happy to share it with anybody if they'd like.
So Tammy, that document is publicly available, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is it on the State Board website, like?
Right. So we've been working with, AOE has been providing great assistance on this. We're working to actually get it up on SharePoint, so that it's a little easier to access. Right now, it is a Word document that I converted into a PDF, so that we can post it, and Maureen has posted that up on our website.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking for members of the public who wanted to find it.
This is a general challenge, and something that maybe as a board we can talk about going forward, is the only real way we have of keeping track of documents and comments that come through right now are if we attach them to specific meetings, right? And so that's something that Kim and I have talked about is a real challenge, right? Because when, especially when you're doing this kind of work, it would be nice to have a space where just all the documents go. And so the documents go up for particular meetings, and as we work through that document, we keep posting that document as a part of our meetings and our meeting materials. But one of the things we are working with AOE around is to come up with a SharePoint, point of access where we can put things, where people can see them and not have to go through every single meeting to find something. And that's just, that's just one of the logistical things I think we're running into, but that's the structure in which we have to work right now.
Okay. So, but at least for right now, if members of the public want to see, like, the most up-to-date document, they would go to your meeting minutes or the meeting agenda, and it would be?
They're in, they're in our, they're, they're attachments to our meeting mater, they're, they're considered meeting materials as attachments, and the last draft is up there. But what we will caution, and there is a date stamp on this, that this is a living document, right? And so we are being very clear about where we may, redline and strikeout, but in the comments section in Word, right, we're noting, this was agreed to on this date for these reasons, or this is a pending, this is a pending change for conversation, things along those lines. So it's important also to read the comments on that document, because you can see sort of how that's, how that's evolving.
I think we am so grateful for Tammy tracking it through our document, and we will make certain, and we have made that an attachment to all of our meetings. We've done our changes, if you will, in the comments section, to not interfere with the strikeouts that the proposed language is differentiating between the original EQS and the Act One body of work. And so our, any proposed changes that we've agreed to as a subcommittee have been captured in the comments section. It is, it does make it a little bit harder, but it preserves the integrity of the proposed language that we received as it is related and relative, related to the original EQS. So we haven't otherwise figured out another way to do that just yet. We will, of course, have, when it goes into the formal process, the, the format that it would normally need. And I think that is a question we have, is what, what is our resource for that? If there, and maybe we'll have an opportunity to chat with Dan or whomever about that. In the past, we've had, Emily had helped with 2200, and Donna has helped with other things. So we'll have that conversation, I'm sure, to just figure out when we get to that part of the process, how do we make sure we're doing it right?
Just to clarify, just to clarify, we do have the comments, but in the text itself, there are, there are redline and strikeouts that show where we are making recommended changes to the language that the Act One Group gave to us, or changes that are independent of that, that are changes to the, to the existing rules. So it's not just, the comments explain the changes and when and how the decisions were made, but the recommended changes, or at least the changes that the group has agreed, that our subcommittee has agreed upon at this point, are marked up in the document. So you can see specific language, not just comments. You can see those. And again, our, is our understanding is, as a subcommittee, that is that we will make some recommendations back to the board, but the full board will have to review that language and make its, make its own determinations. And so our goal is to be very clear about what the language is, is that where we are making, with the subcommittees making recommendations, and also sort of some justification and context for those recommendations. Okay?
And the document that you guys are creating is separate from any work that the AOE might be doing in parallel? Is that correct?
That is correct. And you're talking about, I'm assuming you're talking about the district quality standards. Dan, Secretary French can speak to that. That's a parallel process, yes.
Okay, so the AOE is not also working on EQS?
They're going to bring their technical corrections to us, so that we fold them all into one document, and we're going to have that conversation actually tomorrow.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Secretary French, do you want to weigh in there?
No, absolutely correct. We're not working separately on EQS. We're, we're providing tech, essentially technical suggestions to the subcommittee tomorrow. Deputy Secretary Boucher will present those. The DQS works a separate issue, and we're, we're trying to schedule that meeting on the engagement plan that the board's required to approve for the agency. So.
Okay.
The goal is, and Secretary French and our committee have talked, the goal is not to have these two things, you with multiple pieces going at the same time, because that would be really, I think, be really hard to take through the process to have multiple documents and multiple recommendations at the same time. So thankfully, the agency is leading the charge on the DQS, and our subcommittee is leading sort of the organization on the EQS, but it certainly is a synthetic effort on both, where we're contributing, you know, both groups are contributing.
Yeah, and I think the third piece is the quality assurance process, which is anticipated in the new law. So we, we would like to pull together elements of the EQS and DQS to put a new quality assurance process in regulation as well. So that's essentially a new set of rules, and I think the ones that'll take the most time. That's, that's a significant opportunity, I think, in terms of improving our regulatory construct in education.
Thank you, Dan. I was rolling that in under my umbrella of DQS, but that's right. Dan is, Dan is, thanks for the clarification. There are the district quality standards, there are going to be new quality assurance standards, which I personally was very excited about. I think they're going to be great for the field. And then there's more work on the EQS.
Let me just interrupt. Someone, I'm not sure. I'm getting an awful lot of feedback.
I have been getting that, too. I was wondering if it's everyone. It's breaking up back in my side.
Yeah. So I'm going to mute myself. I don't, but anyway, maybe we can all just mute and then unmute when we're talking.
So anyway, just to sum up, there are three, there are three moving pieces, everybody, right? I'll get down to my, my rule of three, right? So we have the district quality standard work being led by the, by the agency. We have the quality assurance work being led by the agency. We have the update to the EQS, which was being led by our subcommittee of the State Board. The subcommittee on the EQS is taking in the recommendations from the Act One Group, and taking in recommendations for technical corrections from the AOE, while AOE is really focused on developing new regulatory constructs around district quality standards and quality assurance, and has a great engagement plan with the field around both of those. So that's sort of how we divided the work up, and it makes a lot of sense to have the agency be leading this. And I think our subcommittee is doing a good job on leading this. So that's where things are. Lots, lots of moving pieces, but it's all going to come to the full board to review and vote on and have conversation. Okay?
And just timeline-wise, as the board waits in anxious anticipation of receiving these, we expect that we'll be able to bring them to you in December with the feedback to date after the, after the public hearing, and our work to incorporate, or, or at least acknowledge and understand how we have decided about what we make any amendments to, and have that conversation with you all in December, so that we are ideally in line with the secretary's timeline for DQS, because that was defined in law. And I believe that is to enter the process, the formal process in February. So our expectation is to align with that. And if it's helpful, we can also include, for purposes of minutes and otherwise, our most current working document as part of our EQS update for the full board as we go along, so that you all have that to the extent you want to take a look at where we are currently. And certainly, share with us any questions or thoughts you have that'll help inform our work. But I think that'd be a good idea, Tammy, and we can get that. I know that Maureen and Suzanne probably have it from our other meetings, and that might just be a helpful addition to materials for you all.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Anything else? Any other comments or questions from other members of the board? All right. Well, thank you both. That was really helpful. And again, thank you for all of your work on this, because I do realize that it's a lot. All right. We're sort of over the public to be heard, but we, let me just circle back one last time, because we did run over on the EQS update. So if there are any members of the public, we're a little off, but if anyone wants to speak, now's your chance. All right. Hearing none. I'm going to close out that item, and then we're going to move to item F, which is the presentation by Katie Ballard on behalf of the Special Education State Advisory Panel.
Good morning, and I'm going to apologize. I'm going to keep my camera off, because Teams hates me with my Vermont internet, and every time I turn my camera off, the audio goes. I really want to thank the Chair and the State Board for an opportunity to connect today. I know it says presentation. I think this is likely kind of more of a discussion. I believe your Chair sent out the email. I believe, um, your chair sent out the email that I had sent to, um, the past chair in August, kind of explaining what our role is at the state special ed advisory panel and, um, also just kind of reconnecting. So over the last two years, I think most people are aware. Um, our state special ed advisory panel has been undergoing a lot of changes related to bringing us into compliance with the IDEA and the federal statute, um, related to both our role as an advisory panel and our membership. Um, historically, the state advisory panel has lacked parent, um, engagement and hasn't always been a majority of parents of students with disabilities or individuals with disabilities, which is one of the key points of, uh, the federal statute. And I am really excited to say that we have worked really hard over the last two years. And we currently do have a majority, uh, parent voice on our panel. Um, one thing that has also been a priority of ours over the last two years is really, um, shifting the dynamic, I would say, between the parents and the, the educators and professionals on the panel, um, to create a more, I'm going to use the words, healthy and effective collaborative dynamic. I think we can all recognize that at times there have been challenges, you know, with the relationship between parents and especially parents with students with disabilities and the educators and kind of the policy state level conversation. Um, Rachel Seelig, who is the Director for Disability Law Project, who I'm sure you're all very familiar with, uh, was our past chair over the last two years. And in that two years, we have really focused on trying to establish a relationship, I think, with the Agency of Education and really working with Jackie Kelleher, um, to create kind of what that feedback structure is, to be able to provide them and advise them on unmet needs across our state and to be able to comment and provide them feedback on some of their proposed, um, plans or, or data related to students in special ed across the state. In that, we have engaged on the rule change. Um, I believe we did include you on that letter long, long ago when we talked about adverse effect and parental involvement. We spent a lot of time with the AOE staff, understanding and educating the panel on the indicators, um, over the last year and really setting, you know, the data and the goals with the AOE related to that. Um, we wrote a really, uh, detailed letter to the AOE related to the discipline of students with, uh, disabilities, uh, including restraint and seclusion and concerns that were brought to up as a panel related to that. And we also provided feedback in a letter related to supported decision making to the AOE. And one of the things that we as a panel would really like to focus on this year, and myself as chair of our panel, is how we can create that sort of feedback, um, loop or regular consistent communication with the State Board of Education as well as part of our role to advise on areas of unmet needs and to also comment publicly on proposed rules and regulation changes as they relate to students with disability. And also to kind of really begin to have conversations at, across groups that serve these students in a more effective way. And also so that we're not just providing our, our letters to the agency, but also to the state board as you all have, um, you know, the, the role that the state board plays, uh, is different than the AOE. And I think one of the reasons we wanted to kind of open this conversation, and I apologize about being confused on the location and a few minutes late in September. So that's why, you know, the conversation's happening now. But we would really love to begin to figure out how does the State Board of Education kind of, what would it be helpful in terms of our feedback on things? Um, is that in writing? Is that having someone come and speak? Um, we also would like to think about kind of creating a consistent, regular opportunity for either one of, uh, our panel members to come and provide an update to the state board. Or we'd even invite someone from the state board to come to one of our panel meetings if you're ever interested and even update the panel kind of on what are the priorities of the state board. Um, Secretary French was gracious and available at our first in-person meeting in September and was able to kind of give the, the panel his, his kind of priorities from the AOE and, and provided an opportunity for our, our group to be able to ask questions and engage. And I think that was something that, um, members really spoke highly of. And so I would just offer that as another way for our panel to engage or maybe even begin to develop a little bit of a relationship with the state board so that we can both advise on areas of unmet needs, but also when you guys are looking at rule changes or regulation changes. Um, and we may not necessarily have it totally on our radar. Um, we can create a way for somebody on your, your state board to be able to reach out to us or to our, our support with the AOE staff to make sure that we get feedback to you in a timely manner, um, as appropriate. So I'm going to be quiet, uh, for a minute and see if there are any questions. And again, this was really an opportunity to come and kind of reestablish, um, a connection between our groups. And, um, actually before I, I opened, stopped talking for a minute, I do just want to share, we are working on kind of figuring out our priorities for the year at our coming meeting. But I can say we continue as a panel to be focused on the discipline, the Rule 4500, and kind of the impact that has on students and families with, with children with disabilities. And I think it's fair to say, one of the words that continues to come is kind of the trauma or the impact long-term, um, for those students. And based on some of the new information, you know, this summer related to informal, um, I don't know what the informal seclusion conversation, but informal discipline or in-school suspensions, which removes children from their instruction. So that's a continued priority, um, talking about the critical staff shortage and, um, being able to look at some of the other state advisories and what they're doing, um, in an effort to be able to kind of bring some new ideas to the table. And also, um, there's a continued, uh, desire to understand and, and think through the rule change rollout. Um, I think our panel was really disappointed in the, the rule delay related to adverse effect especially, um, and very intentional in wanting to kind of know how that rollout is going and also kind of be prepared for whether or not there might be another conversation about how that looks as we get closer to July 1. So I think that's everything now, I apologize. Um, little scattered this morning. Um, I'm not sure if, if anyone here is aware, but we in our special ed parents and advocacy community lost a very, um, beautiful person, Gina Korea, yesterday. Um, and so I think today's definitely been a little bit harder, so I apologize.
Um, well, thank you so much for your presentation and I'm, I'm really sorry. Um, I can imagine that that would be, may, make this morning all the more difficult. Um, so thank you again for being here. Um, board members, any questions or comments? Kim?
Uh, just, just thank you, Katie. And I think I'm reflecting back to the work on 173 and those rules and how important the engagement of that advisory group was in, in working through those rules. And also recognizing as we, Tammy and I are working through EQS, um, we'll, we'll reach out if it's okay to, um, invite you to an opportunity next week or whomever would be appropriate from your group and make sure you've got the most recent draft to offer feedback there as well. But I appreciate the idea of a liaison type relationship or, um, or an ongoing dialogue, I think, will help inform all of our work in both directions well. So thank you for your leadership and I'm so sorry for the loss of a beautiful soul in Gina. Condolences.
I, I would just say, um, thank you so much, Kim. And as someone who has been a part of the Essex community, I'm sure you, um, are reflecting a little on that yourself today. So thank you for those kind words. Um, we have an executive committee meeting. Um, so we meet as a full panel the second Thursday of every month and we meet as an executive committee the fourth, um, Thursday of every month. So I would be happy to provide the executive committee with an update kind of from our conversation today and find out who might be the appropriate or where the appropriate place might be for that, Kim. But we would absolutely, um, be happy to look any document over and provide feedback on whatever timeline would, uh, meet your needs.
Thanks so much.
So and Katie, are you guys, like, do you follow the state board of ads, like posted agenda? Are you sort of following the rules that are open? And are, I, I guess I want to ensure that you guys are aware on your end of the work, um, that the state board is engaged in.
Um, I would say yes, and, um, I, full transparency, I'm a parent of two students with disabilities. I live with some significant disabilities myself. Um, there is probably not enough time in the day to be on, able to monitor kind of the agendas of all of the different groups who support our population. So while I believe that the answer would be yes, I, I make it a pretty intentional effort to not only read your agendas, but also to read your minutes and your subcommittee minutes just to stay aware. I will say as a personal kind of preference, when the AOE has documents or has conversations that are coming up where they know it would be relevant and appropriate for our panel to have feedback, they do tend to put it on our radar, um, which, which I think makes it a little bit easier for us to, to kind of stay on top of it. That said, um, I would really be interested in hearing if there's a way that we can make sure that we stay kind of aware. Um, but I will definitely continue to make sure we're intentional about checking your agendas. I think it just comes up, like, if there are things that we don't realize, you might want feedback on, or we don't necessarily understand with what the full discussion is. It might be helpful if we could maybe figure out a way for us to kind of have just a quick, hey, this is on our agenda, just wanted to let you know, or, or have the AOE staff, um, be able to flag it. I'm not sure how familiar, um, the staff that supports us is with your agendas. That would be a question I would need to ask them.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think about how to close that loop and make sure that you guys, um, you know, are aware of what's going on. And, you know, certainly I can try my best if there's a special ed, um, component to the work that we're doing to, um, keep you in the loop on that.
That would be appreciated. And I think, you know, this was an opening conversation around kind of, hey, we're trying to kind of reestablish our group in terms of getting back in compliance. And part of that is, uh, you know, making sure that there is that advising and feedback loop with the state board. So I'm, I'm open to kind of seeing how it works with our panel focusing on trying to stay on top of your agenda and would appreciate kind of any heads up. Um, as you mentioned, I would just say, it's important to remember that, um, our panel is kind of here for our students with disabilities and that doesn't always just mean special ed. Um, our students are in general ed first, of course. So sometimes like Rule 4500 with restraint and seclusion, that's obviously not a special ed rule specifically, but it is something where, um, students with disabilities are impacted or involved. So that would be a place where, so if that makes sense, that's kind of the, the hard places sometimes, um, with your agendas, it's hard to tell where it would be helpful or when maybe in the process it would be helpful. So I think as, as we're moving forward, I wonder if even, you know, thinking about having someone from our panel or somebody come to provide an update even quarterly or kind of be able to check in while we're figuring out how to really reestablish this relationship, might be something, um, to consider.
Yeah, and actually that was my next question was whether, um, because as far as what you had said earlier about wanting to have a more regular relationship with the state board, I mean, certainly I think we would all welcome that. Um, and I didn't know from your perspective if it would make sense to say like, hey, every three months, you know, we can put you on the agenda to, um, come and give us an update or if it's really more, you know, topic specific. So, and I don't have an answer to that question.
I think it's probably both. I think it would be a good idea to maybe consider that regular check-in so that we can have kind of that every few months, we can come and kind of check in. That also provides an opportunity for, for us to hear from, from you all kind of where are your priorities the next couple of months? Is there anything we can offer on feedback or any conversation? I will also say it's likely there will be times between that where we have, um, feedback and it would be good to know, are those, usually we write letters, so we write letters to the AOE with our recommendations and feedback in it. Um, should we now kind of send to both of you? Or would it be easier for someone to come and present those recommendations or information? So that would be one question I have for you all. Um, I imagine we will have a recommendation or some discussion around the critical staff shortage piece, um, sooner than the next three months. So that might be something where we could reach out and see if it's appropriate to do it through writing or to have one of us come and speak. But I think it might be a case of both if that is okay for right now.
Yeah, I, I think that all makes sense. Board members, any other comments or suggestions? Secretary French?
No, I just want to, you know, commend Katie and, um, you know, her, that group for their leadership. It's been great to see this panel come back online, essentially. Um, it's a critical role, um, in, in developing policy, but also just maintaining good communication. So it's really good to see, um, these things coming back online, so to speak, and, um, certainly support, uh, you know, the communication structure between the state board and the panel, I think it'd be extremely helpful.
Patrick?
So thank you so much, Katie. I'm getting the feedback from my thing here. And I think, uh, every three months or every other month would be adequate for a check-in, um, at our meetings and to update and just to keep the relationship ongoing. So, thank you.
All right, um, anything else?
I don't have anything else. I just want to say thank you to everybody on the state board for your service and for the dedication you show all of our students. And thank you, Secretary French, for the support the AOE has been giving our panel as we work through kind of getting back online as you speak. And I look forward to collaborating and really building the relationship between our panel and the state board of education over the course of this year. Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you so much. All right, um, well, we are running well ahead of schedule. Um, I don't think anyone's going to be complaining about that. Um, Donna, are you available? Could we, um, maybe deal with agenda item H at this point?
Certainly, this is just a very quick housekeeping matter. I wanted to bring you into the loop of what we're doing and something that arose in Act 176 this year. Um, when the state board created 11 new union school districts in 2018 in its, in it, in the order it was required to produce under Act 46, um, then Chair Hewling and Secretary French attempted to file certificates of the creation of those new union school districts with the Secretary of State's Archives Office. But the Archives Office did not feel that it was able to record those certificates because unlike the normal process under, um, under statute where it's a voter-created union school district, there was nothing in Act 46 about the state board-created, um, ones that would authorize them to. ones that would authorize them to file the certificates. And they were, they are trying to be very purposeful about only filing things in the archives where they specifically have the authority to do so. So, um, in order to have all of the certificates filed in a central location, both those that are, um, for school districts that were created by the vote of the electorate, and those that were created by the vote of the State Board, um, we asked the, uh, the legislature to include a provision in Act 176 that would, um, authorize the certification to be filed. So I, I sent a memo that explains it in a little bit more detail. Um, and I don't believe that there's any need for you to vote, although I did ask Maureen and Suzanne to include possible vote on the agenda, just in case anyone sees any need for it. Um, but if everything is fine, we'll just go ahead and send those certificates to the Secretary of State, and uh, it will now be, there will now be a central location where, where all union school districts are certified as existing.
Great. Um, yes, I read the, um, section 764. It doesn't appear to me like there's any, um, action required on behalf of the State Board of Ed. So I don't think that we need to put this to a vote. Um, but does anyone have any, um, questions for Donna? All right. Well, Donna, thank you very much for taking care of this. Um, and I think it'll be helpful to, you know, have all of this in one central location going forward. So, thank you.
Great. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay. So I think what I would like to do is, um, I'm going to preserve the, the break and the, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion presentation for after that. But, um, the one other thing that maybe we could tackle before the break is Agenda Item K, um, which is just to have a brief conversation about, um, future meeting locations. Um, I think for many of us, our meeting in September was our first live meeting, which, so, you know, going back to my earlier comment about dropping into fairyland during the pandemic, um, which, I mean, I would, I would love to give feedback from everybody about the idea of having an in-person meeting, um, and whether it makes sense to bring that back, you know, all the time, sometimes keep it remote. There are certainly pros and cons, um, with both present, with both formats. Um, I think, um, we tend to get greater participation by members of the public if we're remote. Um, the flip side is, it makes, I mean, I, I, I think the online format has proven to be, um, you know, very user-friendly. Um, but you lose the sort of easier conversation that at least I experienced in our in-person meeting in September. So I just wanted to open it up and, um, you know, really see feedback from the last meeting and then, you know, maybe come up with what might make sense going forward. Uh, Lyle, and then Patrick?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, I, I think that the remote option.
Hey, Patrick, could you mute? I think that your phone's throwing the feedback. It would be helpful if you might mute. Thank you.
Just a couple of things to consider. I think that, um, as far as public access to the board, I think having the remote option is, um, best. It is a long drive if we're going up to, let's say we do it in St. Albans and people want to speak for five minutes, but they live in Brattleboro. I think that precludes participation. Um, I also think that we are in the education business, and it's a relational business, and we need to be together periodically. So I wonder if we can do one or the other through the year. Um, I, I find particularly difficult to do hybrid, because it always seems like we can't hear. Like, when we're on the stage, um, I had a real hard time hearing people. And unless we have technology that allows all of us to hear everyone, then it becomes frustrating. Um, so what we're doing here, and I'm trying to convince my board that I work with, is let's do one or the other, and let's mix it up. Um, but certainly, um, that's just my opinion. So.
Thank you. Um, Patrick?
I think I have some technical issues here. Can you all hear me?
And, but there's a lot of feedback.
So I was, I echo what Lyle said just now. And, uh, the other thing that I was going to suggest, it would be great to move the meetings around the state so that, um, you know, at any given point, we're close to one of the locations that we're representing. And definitely, we should keep the, um, remote an option, but as many of us that can attend should attend in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think I saw Gabrielle, and then Kim, and then Tammy.
Am I unmuted? Okay, there we go. Um, from my perspective, um, remote can sometimes work better. I mean, of course, we have sometimes lagginess of mics and cameras and the occasional other technical difficulty. But I do agree that it can be more accessible for members of the public, and, um, people that are coming to give presentations to speak can give more of a visual aid, um, online with like a slideshow or some other sort of presentation. Um, the drives can also be long, and I know that for me, I have extracurriculars, and with in-person meetings, it'd be very difficult to get there on time, if at all. So sometimes the remote option works a little better since, you know, my extracurriculars are pretty close to home, and I can access them a little bit easier. But I do know that the in-person connections, the social interaction can be important, because it sometimes is easier to have a conversation face-to-face with a person. But I definitely think the remote option should be kept available because of its accessibility for a lot of people. But that, that's all I really have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kim?
Thanks, Gabrielle. I agree as well. Um, I think that we have come to a place where we couldn't, if we are going to do in-person, I think we have to be prepared and have the technology available to support hybrid, because I think that the expectation now is that people can access us and our meetings through a virtual format. And, um, I absolutely appreciate that it is, it was challenging in the space for us to be able to hear people as well as we would have liked. But hopefully, as we would think about where we might do a hybrid, maybe, I, in my mind, I'm thinking maybe, you know, two to four times a year, maybe quarterly, maybe trying to avoid difficult weather travel times around December, January, February, um, planning our schedules so that we are a few times a year out in our communities and plan them geographically, diverse areas, and then, um, continuing to hold the availability for people to join us remotely, I think is really important, whether that be board members for any conflicts or restraints, but, or constraints. But I think if we plan ahead, we may all be able to do our best as board members. But I just think for the public, um, I don't think we can go backwards on that availability. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Tammy, and then Jenna?
My brilliant colleagues have already said many of the same things I was going to say. So the one thing I just wanted, so I think having a mix of in-person and, and remote makes a lot of sense, right, for, um, access reasons. But also, I think it is important for the board to, um, be present, but also be in areas of the state so we can listen and learn, right, and see, and be, be in schools, um, because that's, that's part of what we all care about. And so I think being able to do that's really important. Um, whether it's hybrid or not, I think there are pros and cons on both those sides. And, you know, I think that's something we have to sort out. The one thing I would say, though, is if we're going to do, and I hope we do, go back to in-person meetings, I'd love to be strategic in thinking, not just geographically, right? Like, I do think we need to meet in different areas, but also about when we're meeting geographically, um, what kinds of things are we interested in learning, right? So, for example, I would love to have a meeting, uh, that corresponds with a technical center, for example, where we can listen and learn and, 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 really, so in addition to just sort of thinking about how we might disperse, right? I also want to, I'd like to suggest that we're intentional as a board in thinking about, like, what are the kinds of topics, issues, questions that we have as individuals, as a group, that are percolating? And let's use these opportunities to be in the field strategically, right, to really, where we can set up some time and opportunities to really engage with people and systems and, and experiences that can really help give us the kind of context that we all like to have, when we have to make hard decisions and have conversations and things along those lines. So, all, all good comments, um, by my colleagues, but also just want to put in that plug delay. Let's, let's take this opportunity to be strategic and think about, not just where, but the what, the what, right, um, that we want to accomplish at those meetings in addition to our regular business. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jenna?
Tim, you just rounded out the whole, the whole discussion here. That's great. Um, I think I would agree with lots of everything. Um, I think in that strategic, like, what we're learning about, also, um, visiting schools that are different from each other, um, serving different populations, different struggles. Um, so you talk about equity, looking at schools that are, you know, historically, um, underfunded, or, you know, because I think we, we do not have a, um, we know we don't have a Vermont experience, which is even across our state. So I think that would be, um, and I think the biggest thing of everything, whether we're hybrid or quarterly, in-person, or whatever it is, just planning. Like, if we could plan out a year calendar, that would be really, really helpful. And I think in a year, you can look at it and say, okay, I know I'm going to, for me, I'm going to travel two hours on this day in four months, and I can plan for that. But I, if it's like, oh, next month, we're going to be, you know, in Addison County, that's a little bit complicated for, for some of us. So, planning, 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 and hopefully we can, um, commit, everyone as a board can commit to the in-person times. And how we make those decisions about where, I, I don't know how that's made, if we leave that up to our chair, to pick that up. But I think, um, like, to Tammy's point, and to that equity, I think that's really, um, needs some thoughtful consideration.
Great. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I think you guys all raised some really, really good points. And actually, before I go much further, um, is it a fair assumption that, and I, maybe this is a question from Maureen and Suzanne, is it a fair assumption that wherever we go, that we would have the capacity for a hybrid meeting?
Yeah, I was going to chime in on that. Um, that is exceedingly difficult for us to pull off. We do, as you know, have a contract, uh, for cable access. So, you know, if you think back to, um, the Mount Ave experience, those microphones that were on the table were essentially for the cable access filming. Um, often, you know, pre-COVID, before we had the contemplation of hybrid meetings, uh, we would run into situations where there wasn't good volume in the room, like in the auditorium, and people couldn't hear, particularly in Act 46. So that would result in other microphones being on the table. Um, but when we put together, um, the hybrid experience, it's really just, you know, Maureen and Suzanne, um, you know, trying to basically make that connection literally with a laptop and putting it on a screen. So we're not going to have the ability to fully mic everything up and make sure that works. And I, I could see that being very uneven experience, depending on where we've been. I think what, for those of you who are new to the board, what we saw on Mount Ave in terms of setup was ideal in some ways. You know, we had a space, an auditorium. Sometimes we do these meetings in other places of the buildings, and, um, they don't necessarily set themselves up well to, uh, to do this. So hybrid, hybrid would be very touch and go. Um, I would, unless we figure out, really nail down the technological solution, I would recommend either your in-person or your, or your, or your remote, not try to get into both when you're on the road. I think that's really challenging. And it would set expectations for people that, you know, would be unfortunate when it didn't work.
Okay. So, either or, um, and it, it, I, I guess, because I was wondering, like, are some places better set up for a hybrid possibility? Um, or is it really just, you know, the technical limitations of wherever we are?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll find that, like, the bandwidth issues are pretty good. It's just that, you know, our staff, you know, like, internally in state government, we have rooms that are dedicated for large hybrid meetings. You know, we have cameras that will pick up motion and so forth. Really, it's, it's just like, if you think of what you're doing right now, or what Patrick's struggling with, with the laptop, that's kind of what our staff are trying to do onsite, is try to figure out how to hook a laptop up with a camera, um, you know, to do some things. Now, we certainly could, um, try to think with our ADS, or Agency of Digital Services partners, on how we'd be able to deploy a, a hybrid solution. Um, but that, that currently isn't in our capacity. So we'd have to work on that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it on the calendar with that assumption, without acknowledging that right now. It's going to be a very fragile setup.
Well, and your comment too, about how Mount Ave was, you know, sort of an ideal setup. Um, even that, I think there was some pickup in terms of, you know, being able to hear people in the audience, being able to, you know, capture, um, you know, people who were appearing remotely. So, yeah. Um, if, if that was sort of the ideal, I can imagine that there's some work to be done.
Right, right.
Kim, and then Jenna?
I was just going to suggest that we maybe put the question out to the field school boards. Um, because I know at least until recently, and if not still, I'm thinking of Essex Westford School District, and they are doing hybrid, still recognizing that to have the access people had through remote was important and not something that, as they were meeting in person, um, they retained the ability for public to weigh in remotely. I don't, I honestly don't know what magic behind the curtain allowed for that, but I'm thinking, school boards across the state must probably be navigating this transition as well. And I'm wondering to what extent they can offer insight from the field on how that's worked for them and how that might inform. And if we give ourselves enough time, for instance, as in maybe not an in-person meeting until after the beginning of the year, do we give ourselves a runway to, um, learn more and see what we could do to at least retain public opportunity to participate remotely if we are in person?
So is that a separate question, Dan? I mean, because, I mean, like, our, our school board's the same thing, where we are hybrid and we allow people to, you know, dial in if they want to, um, appear for public comment. Um, so is that, is that a different setup, a different, you know, maybe easier, um, issue to resolve than, you know, a truly hybrid meeting?
No, I, I was thinking, you know, to Essex Westford, and I, I know the space where they hold those meetings quite well. I mean, you're relying on your local tech staff to kind of make sure that all works, right? We would have to have similar arrangement with the local folks. Uh, we would need their help locally to provision the technology to make sure it was accessible, mic'd up and so forth. We can't depend on, um, Maureen and Suzanne essentially to do, do that configuration on a random, I'll say random, on a, on a, on a remote basis. So, um, I don't know if that answers your question, Jen, or were you thinking of, um, like, non-camera access to a meeting and so forth, and?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to sort of tease out, um, I mean, really, with the hybrid, is it, is the problem sort of having the audio and the visual, or is it the, um, technological capabilities of, um, you know, the company that we would be using that could be maybe not an issue if we were relying on local school, school boards and using their technology? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I guess my thinking is more attuned to, like, open meeting requirements. You know, it's, you know, it's, it's problematic if some board members are remote and some are in person, and those remote individuals can't hear the deliberations of the other members. Um, it's also problematic for the public if they can't hear and see, you know, both things happening, if that's, if that, again, is how it's been happening, if that's, if that, again, is how it's been warned. You know, at least if you're fully in person, then the warning is, you know, the expectation, you can see, you can watch it after the fact, but you're, if you want to see it live, you're gonna be there, kind of thing. But, yeah, I mean, we can, we can explore some options relative to technology, but I think it would be important for us to make sure we had the local tech support, you know, and we could, we could go into that with full knowledge, saying, you know, ahead of time to Mount Ave, for example, yeah, we're gonna need, you know, the cable access folks will take care of their setup, because they bring their own microphones and position their cameras and so forth. But we're gonna need to ensure that people in the room can be heard, and we're also gonna want someone on the screen, you know, screen up of the, of the folks that are hybrid and making sure everyone can hear everyone and so forth, and how do we control that? So, assuming we could check those boxes and, and enlist the support of local tech folks, we probably could provision a hybrid meeting. But it's just not something the agency itself could necessarily guarantee.
Okay. And Jen, I'm just, I'll get to you. Katie Ballard, I think this was in response to Kim's, Kim's comment, put something in the chat saying they only do hybrid for the public comment portion. I believe they don't allow for other engagement via hybrid. So, just to clarify that point. Jenna?
I just was gonna, no school, no two schools are created the same. And if we use that as a benchmark, we're not gonna get to schools that don't, are not as resourced or rural areas. At face value, what Mount Ave had was actually incredible compared to maybe some of the other schools that we would visit. So, I don't know, I think the, the best might be like, what's the best option that we could set up ourselves or could be portable and bring in? Because I think if we're, also, we, it is a disruption, too, right? Like, it's a disruption of a school day, it's a disruption of that space, and of the capacity of who's providing the support at this, at the school and district level. So, kind of thinking that through a little bit, I guess the, what we could add ourselves would be probably helpful for the process.
Yeah.
But I just didn't want to see that as like, you know, we can't go there because they don't have tech. Like, well, they can't do that, they probably can't do a lot of other things, that's why we should go there. That's all.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. Tammy?
Thanks, Jenna. I was just gonna share, share a similar reflection. The other thing I, I'm building on that, though, I would say, you know, back to sort of strategic thinking, we also can think strategically about our agendas, right? And so, when, when we are going to be in person onsite, we might construct our agendas in a way where we weren't expecting a lot of, it's more, we're, we're more in the business during that meeting of listening to that community, right? And, and being sort of participants in that, in that setting. You know, it might not be the time to put the EQS rules up for a vote, right? You know what I mean? Like, we could think, we, right, where we would expect that there would be more broad public engagement. And so, you know, perhaps by putting all of these things as design parameters into the conversation, we can come up with some workable solutions. But to Jen's point, I want, and, and I think Secretary French makes a good point, too, here, right? That the agency's gonna work real hard, and so, so are the local tech staff. So, I think we just gotta figure out how to balance all of these things, you know, where we want to go and why, what we want to accomplish while we're there, the need for public engagement in situ, but also for, you know, where do we expect needing to have broader public engagement? And so, I would love to see us try to sort of come up with three to four sites over the next year that we want to do that kind of work on. And then, we may have to be real specific in our planning by site, how we navigate all of these issues. And I don't know that, you know, the conversation, I think we've got all the sort of issues on the table right now, right? But I think the, the, it'll be, we'll have to sort of figure these out site by site, and sort of what works and how we make it work. But for me, the first word of business is where and what do we want to, you know, where and what? Like, if we can get those two things sorted out, like, what is we want to learn and where we want to go, we can figure out these logistics.
Thanks. Kim?
Thank you, I agree. And I think as we consider our work and our responsibilities, in addition to sort of planning the where and what for the year in terms of scheduling, I think we could probably also think strategically about the scope of our responsibilities and do a work plan for the year, and really have a better idea of where we've got some placeholders. And I know some of it is at the, the mercy of a regulatory schedule or otherwise, but some of it probably is work that we know we want to see an update on, in, for instance, just hearing from the special ed community and knowing if that's something we're thinking we want to be following up with quarterly, then that's a placeholder. And we really may get to a place where a work plan for the year becomes obvious when we look closely at our roles and responsibilities and hold some time sacred for those things that we can anticipate and afford ourselves the flexibility to address those things that come up in a way that is not a timing of our choosing.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I love the idea of a work plan. I think the, the biggest challenge to that is going to be the practical reality that, as I sit here, I mean, I, I can sort of think about some things that the General Assembly might be taking up in January, but they are largely going to be the ones that sort of define the work that we're going to be doing. So, we certainly wouldn't know that, you know, before January. And, you know, as, as I've been thinking about this, I think we're all sort of agreeing that on some level, it makes sense to meet in person. I think, you know, trying to put together a meeting in person in November is probably a little bit too rushed, you know, given the fact that it's already October. I don't think it necessarily makes sense to try to plan an in-person meeting through, you know, December, January, February, March, because of snow, and I wouldn't want someone feeling like they needed to be on the road to make a meeting. So, that kind of really puts us to April, which I think allows us to have an awful lot of planning. And so, maybe tentatively, we could think about doing, like, April, July, October in person, but that, to Tammy's point, is really going to depend on strategically, like, if April happens to be when we're getting a lot of public comment on EQS, then that would not feel like an appropriate time to have an in-person meeting. So, I think this has all been really helpful, because I think we've kind of teased out a lot of the parameters of this. I think as far as the public is concerned, we could probably plan on being remote, November, December, January, February, March, and come, you know, early part of 2023, we ought to have a better sense of whether it feels appropriate to do April in person, or do we shift that to May? And then just kind of stagger it from there. Does that feel not too mushy, but, you know, maybe we've put some, some framework on this that we can revisit once we have more information going forward? Jenna?
Can't believe I'm saying, like, historically, before the pandemic, like, I had all this experience, but Kim can agree. We met monthly in person, that was kind of the expectation through every month, I mean, the whole year. And we had some of those visits, like, some of the meetings were at schools, but we did not plan school visits during the summer. I don't think that's a reasonable thing. I don't think any school wants us there in July. So, that's actually the absolute worst time to ever visit a school. So, I would not support going to a school. It actually, May's not, like, great either, May, June, July, August, like, schools, yeah. So, I, I kind of rethink, maybe April's good, but then we have two school vacation weeks in April, right? But on our state, we have, we don't have a consistent April break, so that's a little trickier. Yeah, it's gonna take a lot of planning. So, if we're gonna only take, like, two or three months to do this, there's not, like, great school months, like, September, October are good, December actually is, like, okay. Oh, now we roll onto Christmas holiday break, so it's not, right? Like, January's better. I know it snows, we live in Vermont, but like, January's actually a better month to visit a school. March is good. School months are different than other, like, real people months.
No, I, I get that. And I mean, the other part of the benefit of meeting together is, you know, for us to meet together. I mean, I think that is also important, and I want to recognize the value that comes from, you know, having the opportunity to be in person. It is definitely important to get into schools. But, you know, that is a balance, and I think, you know, to the point where prior to the pandemic, all the meetings were in person, I think one of the silver linings of the pandemic is to, you know, realize how well an online meeting can work in some respects, and you certainly lose things in others. But, you know, just because people did have to drive in January doesn't mean going forward that that has to be the answer. So, I don't know. But I hear your point, you know, June isn't great, July isn't great. You know, and maybe the best months to visit schools are the, you know, the worst months to drive. But who knows, maybe it won't snow. Kim?
I was thinking as well about the April concern, definitely the July concern. And I'm wondering if we maybe are not making absolute decisions now, but we know we're gonna be remote in November. You know, we could, we could maybe think about what makes sense other than that. And I, too, was thinking March is a time that avoids more vacations, because I was sort of sensitive, sensitive to that. And maybe the July in-person is about our retreat work together as a board and planning. And so, that may not be a school visit, so maybe there's two or three other times during the year that we, we are committing to being in the field and learning about our, our schools and our communities. And if we are meeting in person in the summer, which, again, can be hard to plan if we're doing a full day, just even in our availability, July is probably not anybody's perfect month for that, but perhaps June, before people have really headed out in their body of work, but not expecting a school to host us at this time. So, I appreciate Jenna's acknowledgement of those challenges. And we, I'm glad we're ha, I'm really glad we're having this conversation, and I look forward to maybe us thinking and revisiting it briefly in November to see if something else came out of it. Because partially, I think the hybrid answer is gonna help inform what is going to maybe work when we're onsite. And if that becomes more owners than value added, then we maybe don't have four times that we do it, but we, you know, look at a couple, March and October, maybe, or something that people can reliably expect to find us out in the universe. But just some thoughts. Thank you for bringing this conversation to the table, Jennifer.
Thanks. All right, so instead of April, why don't we think about maybe, you know, sticking a pin in March? But again, we can kind of revisit the issue after the first of the year, just when it becomes clear, like, what other timelines may or may not make an in-person meeting helpful in terms of, you know, public comment? So, okay. Well, thank you all for your good thoughts. I think at this point, let's take our break. We are a little bit off schedule, but we're ahead of schedule. So, why don't we plan to come back at 10:15 for the Milton Town School District presentation? And in the meantime, if everyone could mute themselves and turn off their cameras, that'd be great. Thanks. With, with my apologies, I might just turn it over to the Milton Town School District, and if you guys wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves and then starting with your presentation. So, welcome. And Lynn, I think you're still muted. Suzanne, Maureen?
I've given Lynn the ability to...
Now, I cannot mute, I couldn't unmute before. That might be Patrick's issue, too, I'm not sure.
Patrick has the same. He's a presenter as well, he should be able to unmute.
And may I share my presentation, our presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna, I haven't done this before in Teams, so I'm, I'm working on it here. Hang on, just one moment. It's not showing it as an option, so hang on, just one second.
Yep, I see a spreadsheet.
Ah, that's not supposed to be it. Um, hang on. I'm gonna give, Jennifer, is that you? Can I give you control of the spread, the presentation?
I don't think so.
Okay, it says I can give control to, well, Mike, maybe you can do it.
Yeah, I think it has to be someone, like, within your network.
Ah, there we go. Thank you, Michael.
This is Suzanne. I'll, I'll take it over.
Hi, Suzanne. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Before you get started, Lynn, I, I see there's a message saying, can Mike and I be made presenters so that we can also unmute?
Yes, so that would be Michael Abbott and Wilmer Chavaria.
Okay. And yes, I did make them presenters.
Thank you.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
All right, so I am going to start us off. First of all, my name is Lynn Manley. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction for the Milton Town School District, and we wanted to start by thanking Patrick Brown for inviting us here today to share our diversity, equity and inclusion, or equity diversion inclusion, and agency and access work that we, we've been doing at the Milton Town School District. We have a presentation for you that I think will be pretty efficient, and it also, I know Suzanne has a copy of it, so that she can share it with you as well, if you would like a copy of that. If you could just move to the next slide, thank you. Okay, so we're each gonna introduce ourselves, and I'll just say that my name is Lynn Manley, again, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Milton Town School District. This is, I think, about my 20th year in the district. Before that, I've worked in Berry Town, I worked in Williston Central School, and I worked in Virgin's. So, I'm a, an educator since the age of 22, and I won't give you my age now, but it's been quite a while.
Hi, I'm Whitmer. I'm the District Director for Equity and Education Support Systems at Milton. I just wanted to ask if everybody's able to see the slides right now? Is everybody able to see the presentation?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not able to see it, so I, it might be on my end, so I'll figure that out. So, thank you for having us. Mike, you're next.
My name is Mike Abbott, the Director of Student Engagement at Milton High School. I'm filling in for Ali Vega, who is our Librarian, Equity Coach, and Roland Fellow at the high school.
Okay, next slide, please. Thank you, Suzanne, for doing our bidding. All right, I'm gonna start just by giving a district-level overview of kind of the, the genesis of our work and how we got started in this work. It, when I moved to my position, I was an English teacher at Milton High School. There were two catalysts, and that was around 2003, two catalysts in our district that began us on our equity work in the district. And that was a passion for equity and a passion for data. And we had a principal in the high school that was, is excellent at using data to plan and make strategic moves around equity for students, and has a very passion for every single student in our district, and ensuring that they all have an equitable access to a high-level, appropriate education. So, it came about that our, our first step started at Milton High School. And some of those first steps included basically de-tracking. So, untrack- And some of those first steps included basically de-tracking. So untracking and homogeneously grouping our high school, our ninth and 10th grades at first were the ones that were first untracked. And to support the ninth and 10th graders that needed support with the rigorous work that was happening in the high school classrooms, we implemented a clinic that every student had access to all of their teachers during, that would, they would have during the day. And they could sign up to work with those teachers and receive any support that they needed, which has, you know, it's evolved to become more of an intervention type block or classes that now exist. They coexist with our first instruction. We also worked on a grading policy, making it more equitable so that it wasn't a, students, for students, it wasn't a one and done. You do this assignment and then you get this grade and you don't have another chance. So we implemented the opportunity for students to work towards proficiency on all of the summative informative assessments that they were working on. And we separated student behavior from student learning in our grading system. So these are just very broad strokes of equity and gatekeeping that were keeping our students from every single student from having an access to the highest level of their education. So from that, we began really making a big move to improve and promote our advanced placement classes. And in my mind, as a curriculum director, doesn't matter whether they're IBAP honors classes, you can call them what you want. But we have an incredible number of students taking more than one AP class. We have open enrollment for our AP classes. There is no entrance exam, grade requirement from ninth and 10th grade. Teacher recommendation, none of that is required to take an AP class. If students are interested in an AP topic and they wish to take a rigorous class, they are automatically enrolled and they are supported to stay in the class as much as possible. In the rare case, and I actually taught one of these classes, in the rare case that a student is not able to keep up with the pace, the class grade is, the class title is merely converted to a regular class title instead of an advanced placement title. So it's, you can stay in an AP class, get an English score, for instance, an, an English class credit. It just wouldn't be an AP on a transcript at the end of the day, or you could switch to another class if you would like to. Teacher advisory was implemented to make sure that all students had access to teachers and to social emotional supports during the day. And that followed the statewide and national trend of teacher advisory. So we moved from a homeroom kind of model, the old school, and moved towards teacher advisory. So racial equity began to be a focus, starting in around 2017, our data and disaggregated data and demographics brought that same principle, looking at the data and the passion for equity, to attend the 2017 Courageous Conversations Conference. I believe they actually call it a summit. And they, the group of teachers and administrators attended that. And there was a real, a real genesis of professional learning that began in the high school first and then it spread across the district. So as soon as, at about that time, 2016, 2017, I moved in to the Director of Curriculum role and instruction. And so we began to continue with district-wide use of disaggregated data, an eye towards equity and cultural proficiency and equity was embedded in our district continuous improvement plan from that point forward. All students, I'm sorry, all schools' work plans aligned with that district CIP. All schools required to align with the district cultural proficiency work. And all district employees who have any contact with students were required and we provided anti-bias courageous conversations education for all teachers. And Michael will speak to how that continues at the school level to this date. More recently, we have selected an equity framework for all curriculum work. And we are building curriculum from the ground out, using, ground up, using both a UDL framework and also a racial equity framework that we have chosen. And it's based on the work of Dr. Goldie Mohammed, who is going to be in Vermont soon. We began working on that through Kathleen Brenniger. We're actually presenting at the Roland Conference next week. We, in addition, we elevated our data and assessment position to be a Director of Data and Assessment to ensure that we were keeping our eye on the data and we have regular PLCs, regular administration meetings and regular building level meetings focused on data where we disaggregate the data and ensure that we have a constant eye on success for all students. And that includes social emotional learning data as well as academic data, attendance, all sorts of different aspects of data. And I won't say lastly, because there are many other things, but we have hired a Director of Equity and Education Support Systems. And Wilmer is with us today. He'll be speaking in a bit. And he is certainly working on systems and structures to support all of this work for us. Next slide, please.
So, good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Mike Abbott. I'm the Director of Student Engagement at MHS or Milton High School. I'm filling in for Ali Vega, who is our Equity Coach, Librarian and Roland Fellow. I'm just going to focus and highlight a few of the things that we're doing currently or have done at the high school. While Lynn focused on some of the more technical and structural pieces we're looking at as a district, I want to focus specifically on racial equity initiatives at MHS. This year, last year, and the year before that, we've dedicated PD time or professional development time for faculty. We're doing that one to two times a month. This, we focus solely on anti-racism work during this time. This work started, you know, with a personal, personal and systematic examination of race and racism. It's followed up by how does this show up in our school system and professional practices? That work is still continually playing out within these, these PD meetings. PD also looks like we send a number of, or we've sent a number of our faculty to Courageous Conversations summits over the last five years, I believe. And we've also worked with them remotely and a number of our staff have done the Beyond Diversity Training with them. Another thing I'd like to highlight is the Roland Fellowship. Ally and another faculty member received a Roland Fellowship. This is an award or a grant. It's, it's open to all secondary teachers. It provides time and resources to study an area of change and innovation. Our previous work as a school and as a district sort of led to this idea of, of using Roland and is, is predominantly why we were selected to receive this award. Our work within this fellowship focused on how we bring anti-racism work to a predominantly white school or white space. The benefits of our participation in this Roland Fellowship, it's allowed for space to continually focus on our anti-racism work, especially during the pandemics over the last two years. It's also allowed for the development and hiring of specific equity positions. As Lynn said, Wilmer was hired as our Director of Equity and Education Support Systems, and Ally was hired as our Equity Coach here specifically at the high school. Our Equity Coach is an in-building support for teachers and acts as a liaison between, you know, our school and the district office. And she also plans a majority of our anti-racism work or PD. We've also recognized that students must be our partners in this work. And with this knowledge, we've partnered with a group called Up For Learning to bring their voice into the equity work here at the high school. We really value their voice. This, this group's made up of about 45 to 50 kids. They're meeting three times a month. The group of students also sort of broke off last year and took things into their own hands, a, a smaller group of them. They created curriculum that allowed for complex conversations around race to happen within our advisory system. That work will be continued with this larger group this year. And then finally, affinity spaces are something that we've really been focusing on here at the high school in developing and maintaining and continually growing. So one of the findings of the Roland Fellowship was that we, that there was a, a large need for an affinity space specifically here at the high school and within our district. While this isn't a new concept, it is essential and needed in a predominantly white school. Again, our faculty and staff of color also have an opportunity to meet once a month during their contracted hours within these affinity spaces or in affinity. We've also created an anti-racism center which provides opportunities for our students of color to find affinity. So we've done some substantial work over the last five years with regards to our, our racial equity work and initiatives here at MHS. And thank you for, for your time and letting me share that with you all.
Hi.
Go ahead. Next slide, please.
So Lynn's going to be guiding me here because I'm still not able to see that what's being presented. But, so I'm going to be brief because I know we're running out of time and maybe there might be a question or so at the end. So I will just say, if we're on the slide that says deeper look into critical policy. That has been one of the major things that we've pursued in the past couple of years. Since I came on board last year, I made sure that there was no too much disruption in a lot of the wonderful work that, that's already been mentioned by my colleagues. And so I didn't want to come and take over and pretend that I have the, the authority or expertise to, to have, to have the answer to many of the great questions that our schools face. So we, we got organized and decided to go at some of these efforts on multiple fronts. So critical policy not only involves all of the policies that, you know, that continually need to be revised and, and and maybe even written if it doesn't exist, but also deciding which ones are the most relevant and the most consequential for the day-to-day for students, especially those students that usually do not get much attention. I, we list some examples in this slide. And those are policies that not only have been reviewed, but also have been crafted collectively with multiple stakeholders over the past couple of years. If, if you don't mind if we move to the next slide, please? Now, the, this next slide is about procedure because even though policy, we're able to prioritize policy and know which, which aspects of the school are critical to look at from multiple lenses, especially from an access perspective. We also realize that sometimes policy by its nature doesn't have all of the answers or cannot predict the majority of, of actual events that may take place in schools. And that's why we've actually also tried very hard to engage in procedure creation. So we do not stop at the policy level. But whether the policy itself asks us to create this or not, we are in the process of building robust and comprehensive procedures so that if this is usable for principals, for education leaders, for teachers, for families and students to understand and know why they exist. And this also is a lot of work. In some ways, it's actually more work than, than looking at policy itself because the procedure is where you have to go to the people that will, that, that are affected by this on the day-to-day and build procedure that is useful rather than just doing it to put it on the shelf. And that has been quite a bit of the work we've, we've been engaging on. We know that this is, interestingly enough, it feels like a lot of our districts are a little bit behind when it comes to procedure because we have been in partnership with neighbors as well. And I, I've noticed that a lot of our districts have similar needs. And so this is an area that we've recognized is, is not very well developed. And so we're taking advantage of, of that opportunity to, to give answers, real concrete answers to the practitioners in the day-to-day. Some examples also listed in this slide include some things that are very big questions right now, not just for us, but also across the state and across the nation. This includes censorship of messages and displays. You know, we've, we've seen this all over the place. Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter flags. Inclusive messages being challenged. We also are in the process of creating procedure for transgender and gender non-conforming students because the policy itself is, is not enough. Of course, we, we adopted the policy, but a lot of the questions that need to be answered are not necessarily right there in the policy or in state guidance at this moment. Same thing with curricular materials. It's at the center of a lot of the nationwide conversation and political wars going on. So in the end, we have to give answers to our principals and to our practitioners to know what our position is and how we will operationalize all of that. And other, other examples that you can read in this slide, this is not obviously comprehensive. These are just examples of work that we've been engaging on over the past few months with the idea of readiness rather than being, rather than responding to an event that already happened. So we're, we're trying to be proactive and make sure that when very serious things come our way, that we're not caught off guard, that we are actually ready and well-educated on how we will tackle that and minimize the damage and the level of controversy that some of these things will cause. Next slide, please. Again, as I said, it's, it's, it's all about, not all about, well, it is all about ensuring that the education, educational experience for our students is not disrupted or interrupted or that we as a system do not become distracted by the many distractions going on outside, whether they're real or not. And we want to make sure that there's enough education and calibration across the schools, across leadership and across the school community in how we will respond to many of these questions, so much, some of which are varied.
Wilmer, I think they still need to move the slide one forward, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we, we want to make sure that we are not distracted by the political and social noise coming at us, but at the same time, we cannot ignore it because that would be, that would not be wise. So the, the recipe that we've decided to, to go with is to ensure that we have systems and education in place to calibrate and to strengthen the way we respond, but at the same time, be ready for any event that might be coming our way. We've had different levels of practice. We've had different levels of engagement with some of these issues. In, in fact, this happens on a weekly basis, not daily basis, and you never know, but what we're procuring is, is, is the readiness of the system to ensure that there's the least distraction possible to the experience of the students and to what actually should be going on in the classroom. As opposed to engaging with animosity and highly, highly controversial or politically charged dynamics at the local level. If we go to the last slide, I will leave it at that. One example of this is the way we approach the creation of the equity policy. We know that there is a model policy by the VSBA, which we appreciate. But this was one of those critical policies that I spoke about at the very beginning, that we did not think it was wise to simply take the model policy, which is wonderful, and rubber stamp it with our name on it. This, we decided that this would be a three-year process. In fact, we, we were comfortable with that. We knew that in three years, many changes could happen, including the board composition could happen, could change and maybe even multiple times, but we understood that and we did that on purpose. So we are on year three, actually moving on to, this might actually go into a, a little longer than three years, but we're very proud of the way this process has, has, has played out. We, this whole thing will culminate with a- We, this whole thing will culminate with a very big forum, community forum being scheduled for December the sixth, for which we are inviting all sorts of sectors and especially the families and the Milton community and students. The board itself at Milton has engaged for months now in in countless conversations and 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 actual official policy committee meetings just to look at this one policy line by line, paragraph by paragraph. And this is not the model policy that I'm referring to. It's actually a policy that we drafted together that ended up being, I think, sixteen pages long. It it will not be sixteen pages long by the time we adopt it, hopefully, but it's it's still quite an undertaking. So that's just one of the examples of how we're approaching policy. I will leave it at that because I know we're almost out of time. So if anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
All right. Well, thank you, all of you, for the presentation. That was really helpful and I appreciated the slides sort of dovetailing with, you know, what you were saying because I think that was just a really helpful format. One thing I was wondering is, I know that you did receive the Rowland Fellowship, but I'm just curious, you know, as I think about other school districts that might want to sort of take what you guys have done and, you know, maybe apply it to their own purposes. How do you pay for the cost of the new position, you know, short of the fellowship? But like, if a school district wanted to engage in this work, like, what suggestions might you have for like how they could find the funding to do this?
If I may, unless one of my colleagues wants to jump in. So of course, this is a question that not only not only we face because some of our positions, many of our positions related to this are dependent on funding that may or may not be there all the time. So that's that's a very relevant question, one that we are exploring as a state in what we call now the Vermont Education Educational Equity Collaborative, which is a lot of colleagues from across the state in similar positions as mine. And that has been a central question. So but my quick answer to that will be many of these efforts shouldn't be siloed into the D E I or whatever traditionally we've called this type of work. This is central to what some of our educational priorities are, should be, and many of them have always been in the in the field of education. And so it's not a matter of, you know, of where we find the funding. It's a matter of how we how we ensure that the systems are created and tailored toward making some of these efforts the priority of our educational work. Because it doesn't live on the side of the classroom or on the sides from instruction or apart from what goes on on the day to day operations of the buildings. This should be embedded through every part of this educational structure. So ultimately, this is the responsibility at the local level of the school board and the superintendent. So you shouldn't need somebody in my position as a district director of equity for you to engage in this type of work. I hope that my my position in this district is eventually not needed because we've understood that the superintendent is the one leading this type of work and that the school board equips the superintendent with the authority and the and the prioritization ability to make this work central to education.
I would also, that is a, oh, sorry. As a curriculum director, that I see this data, just looking at the disaggregated data, cultural proficiency, work, professional learning, all of that is part of my job, my existing position. We certainly appreciate any expertise that we do not have being available to us. But I think every educator needs to see this work as part of their job. And so Wilmer really, I think, did a great job there talking about how this is not someone else's job. This is the work of each and every educator in the state of Vermont. And we could add ten positions and not still not get to the work if we didn't have the heart and the passion and the just the the moral imperative to make sure that this is part of the work.
Well, and Lynn, what I was gonna say too is just reflecting back at the beginning of the presentation. I mean, it seems like in two thousand and three, you really sort of started down this path that culminated in where you are today. So certainly, I think, you know, that was something that you just kind of saw a need for and started doing, which was.
Yep. It was really a principal at the high school that had a passion for equity. And she, it started with literacy and then it just grew. And as our demographics grew and changed, and I think we all became more aware of racial equity, it, I would say, it blossomed to include equity of all kinds and has really now, when our data were with our N sizes, we're able to see more clearly the systemic implications of gatekeeping and other kinds of discrimination. And so that informed the work that was to be done in equity.
Thanks. So Tammy and Kim, I'm not sure whose hand went up first.
I can jump in. Thank you to Michael, Maran Lynn for coming today and for your excellent presentation. One of the things the state board is engaged in right now is reviewing and considering the recommendations by the Act One Working Group for Updating the EQS, the education, state's educational quality standards. And so both Kim and I have been been sort of really thinking through that through quite a bit. So I'm curious about sort of how you see the work you're doing now in the context of the state's educational quality standards and what feedback you might be able to provide us generally. And I I think Kim and I would love to have you come talk to our subgroup in more specifics. But I'd be curious to sort of in this higher level treetops conversation that we're having right now is how do you see the EQS enabling or constraining the kind of work you're doing right now? Because as you said, right, like, this, this should be foundational, right? This is not a top down, we're pushing new idea. This is building from the bottom up, from curriculum and instruction to throughout the school and how systems are organized. So I'm a little curious, like, how do you see, do you know, the EQS enabling or constraining the kind of work that you're doing? What opportunities are there for us to be thinking about with respect to the educational quality standards? Thank you.
I could, I am sure Wilmer and I both, or the three of us, all have a different point of view. I can speak from my point of view as a curriculum director when I am in charge of federal grants and, you know, purchases and going to the board and requesting funds for professional learning. I see EQS as a baseline leverage point, kind of like an accreditation process, like NEASC, which we do at our high school. But it is a baseline of what we as educators believe is educational quality in the state of Vermont. And I think that for me, if it stays as a, if it is, and I've read through the draft policy EQS, if it stays the standards, if it stays as a lens through which to do the work and is is, I think, every school is different and has a different faculty and has a different level of readiness. I think if it continues to be a lens through which we do all of our work, that that is extremely helpful to have as a, for me, I can speak to as a leverage point. Because as school boards change, as Wilmer alluded to, as, you know, demographics change, as who comes and goes in an individual town or school districts change, it's always nice to have that touch point of what we know to be true and to be right for all students.
So I'm trying to make sure I don't speak to the specifics of what's in the in the latest draft of the EQS, the EQS work that have has been going on. I will say that its major function, in my opinion, is 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 becoming part of the, a set of efforts at the state level, specifically by by your entity in legitimizing a lot of the work that goes on at the district level for ourselves. And Lynn, some of the examples Lynn just mentioned is 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 how we do that. But whether it's through EQS or licensing standards and and all sorts of other rules that you may be in charge of overseeing, it's about creating a pattern of legitimacy for the work that goes on in the district. So it doesn't matter the specifics, as long as the, how that, how whatever comes before you was done collaboratively and that involved the voices of the people that will actually be impacted by it, specifically voices that are not usually represented, then I'm confident that this will be better than what we had before. And not only that, I think that even if even if I believe that the committee did a terrible job, which they did not, they they've done an amazing job so far, from what I've read. But even if that wasn't the case, I'm pretty sure that the 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 bar will be a lot higher than what it was before Act One was already passed. So and that continues to provide us this pattern of legitimacy to a lot of the work that we're doing and gives us a lot, a lot of a stronger tool when we're confronted with opposition towards some of the work that we are responsible to carry out. So I appreciate the work that's being done. I cannot wait for that level of state level legitimacy to some of the work that we're doing because it obviously connects. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Kim.
Mike, did you have something you wanted to add? It looked like you were trying to click. I just want to make sure.
No, I didn't, Tammy. I'm sorry. I I think Wilmer and Lynn spoke very eloquently about.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't trying to click the mic off while we were moving on because I could see you moving and I was like, great.
Outside of this realm, but.
Shall I go? Great. And thank you all so very much. The work is so intentional. And I'm so grateful to hear you speak of it as being not discreet. I mean, the the body of work has to be approached intentionally. But when it's, I think, at its best, as you guys described, it is pervasive in every bit of work happening in the district. It is the work and it's everybody's shared responsibility. And I really appreciated hearing you all reflect that and think about it systemically through your policy work because, as you all have pointed out, as boards change and communities change, that I think the lever, you all described it, you described it as the legitimacy and sort of the leverage point that is provided through things like regulatory construct, which we're working on in EQS. But at a local level, it's through policy, really. Board and their best level of governance is operating through policy and that becomes less fragile from board to board if good governance is the center of their work and policy is well informed by your communities and and taking the time to do that, particularly around an equity policy. I can appreciate how difficult that work is and I am so very grateful to hear you share your process with us. And it strikes me as a model for the way the work could happen with integrity to have people engage with it within your schools, but also within your community. And that common understanding, I'm guessing, gives you sustainability as you eventually get there with the policy. But then that's a huge tool and I'm just so grateful for your work in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right.
I'm sorry, I just might ask if it's okay if there's time. Have you, have the challenges from your community? How has that been going for you? Or or have there been, is there a shared learning that's happening that's evolving through the process? Or is there a body of opposition that's been consistent through the process? It's it's hard to know how communities evolve and I'm curious.
I'm sorry, Lena and Mike, I feel like I'm speaking a lot, but I I will have to take this one because. Go ahead. Yeah, I was saying, because Mike and Lynn know that I've been yelled at quite a bit and physically, you know, people standing up in front of me and I'm being aggressive and such. And so I feel like I'd like to answer this one. We've been very intentional, as you said, Kim, the use the word intentional about not being quiet about some of these things. In fact, the moment we had a, like, the moment we have even a rough draft of anything, we put it out there. We put it on, we we talked to the paper, we put it on our website. We say why we, last spring, we created this afternoon conversation series. And we and we also had these, also these other kinds of gatherings. Where one time we got like thirty people just to come and sit there with very angry faces. And so in some of these interact, oh, and also lots of emails, very strongly worded emails and such. But in lots of these interactions, I found that nothing was surprising. I I think we all know what we're signing up for when we engage in this type of work. And we we would be very naive to think that it's going to go smoothly or that it's not going to awaken some emotions. And so we have had quite quite our share of of pushback at all levels of emotional charge and 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 even physicality, you name it, or or voices. And but as I said, none of these things have been surprising. So if we have to make sure that that continues to be the case. We know that this will continue to happen, but what we cannot do is to be surprised by it. Because if we're surprised, then it means that we were not ready. It means that our expectations were not realistic. It means that we were not prepared to answer some of these, some of this pushback or some of these questions, some of which are actually legitimate questions, maybe packaged in a little bit of an aggressive tone. That's why we, as long as we're ready, then we then then we should not be surprised.
All right. And I'm sensitive to the fact that you guys are probably having other things to go, places to go, but Kim, let me bounce back to you one last time.
I'm sorry. I thought I would wrap us up on the positive question to ask if you've had a coalition of parents or community support as well. Have you had that organized effort within your community? I know there's no shortage of challenge, but has there been a coalition that's evolved of support for this work from your community?
Yes, and I'll let Mike and Lynn speak to a to a good one.
I mean, I can speak a little bit to our student voice groups, Kim, in that I think in incorporating student voice in this work, they can then take this out into the community. I'm I'm not personally a member of the Milton community. So I don't necessarily know how I would disseminate or interact with people with within here, within Milton. But I do know that our our students are very involved. They they want this, they appreciate this, they're willing to do the work. They find it relevant to themselves and to the world that they have become accustomed to living in. And they want change and they're asking for it. They're they're demanding it. They're 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 very on top of it. And I think, you know, they're bringing their voices and the education that they're gaining by by learning within this group out into the community. And my hope is that eventually that turns into more of like a collective coalition versus a just a parent or guardian or adult coalition that is is aiding us. It's gotta be a whole community and it's got students and it's it's gotta be student focused first and foremost. But having the help of adults would would also be nice. But I I would say that that is happening and in the works.
I would say that I live in Milton and I have, and my kids went through the system. And I would say that there, you know, we we have, I don't, I would. And I would say that there, you know, we have, I don't, I would gather, I think that the silent majority, or the quiet majority of the folks know that we're doing great work. And the fact that I'm not, I mean, I don't, people aren't beating down my doors all the time. And I know that if I, you know, I, one night, I said, hey, I said to a bunch of friends, let's go to the equity committee meeting. They're like, okay, let's go. So we do, you know, people have a lot of things going on in their lives. And I think that they, overall, I feel like the support is there. We've had trainings with the town, we've had an equity fair that we participated in with the town, and that's where I saw Patrick, and he said, hey, why don't you come speak to the board? There are a lot of community-wide efforts that many people support. You know, I think that when people are angry, they're more likely to be very loud and vocal than if they're happy. So it's hard, it's hard to gauge, but I feel, in my gut tells me that, like, most people see this as good work, and know that equity is very important, and that it's part of the role of education. And so, and I feel comfortable, you know, saying that, so.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. This was a great conversation. You know, certainly I learned a lot. And I hope you all continue your good work, and hopefully other schools could reach out to you if they're kind of looking for ways to get started on their own path, or continue whatever work they're doing. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us almost to the end of our meeting. I think what I'd like to do, we talked a little bit earlier, you know, in Item K, about future locations. I think what we can do is kind of do a wrap-up as far as agenda items for our November meeting. And let me just, because we did have some issues that we mentioned today, let me just pull it up. So I think as far as I know, for November, we're going to be revisiting the Lincoln assignment issue. We'll have an update on the district quality standards. I think Donna will be bringing some paperwork for Ripton for us. We should have some independent school approvals. And Dan mentioned earlier, an update on school safety. Am I forgetting anything? Is there anything else that we need to put on the agenda that anyone knows about right now?
I may, and I certainly need to touch base with Secretary French. I believe that we will be talking about the DQS public engagement for the quality assurance in the DQS. The agency is preparing a public engagement planner on that that we have to sign off on. And I would expect that would be there. The other thing is, is, could you just maybe take two seconds to confirm, or maybe share out where, what the outcome of the Ripton vote was? I'm not sure everybody is on the same page about what has transpired there since our last meeting.
Oh, well, and I don't have the exact numbers, but I do know that Ripton voted to return to ACSD. And it was not a particularly close vote. I mean, it was, you know, it was clear that that was the majority vote to return to ACSD. So they have 30 days in which time someone could file for an appeal. Once that 30-day period lapses, then it becomes final. And if no one files for an appeal, then that's when Donna would be bringing the paperwork to the next board meeting for us to file with the Secretary of State.
So likely, that may also be on our November agenda, correct?
I did mention that, but yes.
Yeah, okay, I just,
Yeah.
putting all the pieces together in my head.
Lyle? And Kim, did you have, Lyle and Kim?
Yeah, just on that, the vote was 148 to 89. So it was a clear, a very clear vote.
Yeah, thank you. Kim?
I was just wondering, as we think about the November meeting, just for all of our planning, I'm wondering if we anticipate, it certainly won't be as long as our September meeting, but given the weight of the topics at hand for the agenda, will we, should we be expecting a normal half-day meeting or longer, as far as you can anticipate at this point, Jen?
That is a good question. I think a lot, well, I think it should be shorter than September, because we are not going to be hearing from multiple supervisory unions and supervisory districts. So I think the conversation will involve fewer players. We will also have the recommendation from the secretary, which, you know, could be a starting point for our conversation as a board as to what we feel is appropriate. And I'm sure that there will be opportunities for, you know, any affected parties to speak to the board, you know, plus, you know, pros or cons. We have been receiving, or I've been receiving emails on, you know, an almost daily basis from various members of potentially affected SUs, with, you know, the personal opinion of whoever is sending the email. And I've been responding to those, and then also looping Maureen and Suzanne in on that. So all of those emails will be included in the agenda packet, just as an FYI for board members, and just as a way to sort of really increase the opportunity for public comment. So I think I'd like to keep it as a half-day meeting, you know, if we have to start at eight instead of 8:30, you know, that would be a possibility. But I think, you know, as I'm looking at it, you know, that will probably be a chunk of time. So I, you know, I will start working on the agenda prep, you know, probably in the next week or so, to really like hone in on the amount of time for things. But I think, you know, let's plan for a half-day.
Thank you.
But
Yeah, just one other clarification. So are we warning for potential action or action? I'm just thinking about the amount that we'll be taking in for, to inform the decision and whether or not we will have what we need to act on it in real time, as opposed to whether or not that may be December. I'm sensitive to the timing for districts.
Sure. I mean, the plan is to reach a decision in November. Emily, I see that you're still on there, and I don't know if you have any more, you know, guidance or thoughts on that. But, you know, my understanding is that we should be armed with, you know, the universe of information, and the expectation is that we would make a decision in November.
Hi, this is Emily. Yes, that's my understanding of the planning conversation.
Okay.
Terrific. Thank you. Only recognizing that the vote will be whatever the date is, is it the eighth, or something pretty close to the timeline for our meeting. And I don't know to what extent that informs things like even the AOE's recommendation, or their response from, you know, potentially impacted parties, knowing that that area is in state of flux.
Yeah, my understanding, I don't think Dan is just waiting for the vote to happen. I think he's sort of planning out contingencies in order to build his recommendation. And then, you know, the rest of us will know come November 9th, the outcome of that vote. So anything else for the agenda? And certainly, if you think of anything, just email me and let me know. I think, you know, I didn't mention, but I'm assuming that there will be another EQS subcommittee update. So, okay. Well, let's leave it there for now. And let me just, we do have another opportunity for public comment, if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard. All right. Hearing none, anything else? All right. Well, then I will entertain a motion to, Lyle.
I just said one thing, and maybe other people, someone reached out to others as well as me. But there was a complaint by a parent about something happening at his or her school. And maybe Emily will correct me here about procedure, but my response was to make sure that you first go to the administration. If you don't feel you are receiving an answer that is responding to your concern, you should then go to the superintendent. And if you don't like that, you can go to the school board. If you don't like that, you can go to the Agency of Education. But coming right to the State Board of Education won't typically get you exactly where you want to go as a first point of concern. So I don't know if others, I think, I just want to make sure that I'm following a procedure that would be recommended by the agency.
Jennifer, did you want me to answer that?
I think that was directed to you, but yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I'll put it back on the board, that I, as a person at the agency, wouldn't direct the board how you handle that kind of outreach, right? But I'll offer that many times, one of you will forward me, or I believe people do to Dan, to a question, you know, would it be correct for me to, and it's very easy, I know, for me to respond back to you quickly and just confirm from my point of view whether the person has an appeal directly to the State Board under statute. There's really only, as you know, tuition appeals that go directly to you all.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Well, thank you. So is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, it's been moved by Kim. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, hearing none. The motion is approved, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Bye.
Have a good day, buddy.
You, too.